Good evening. I'd like to call the Cumberland School Committee meeting to order this evening at 6:33. And I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Sure.
Mr. Vice President, Monica is second by Mr. Fiorella. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six to zero with Mr. Duffy absent this evening.
We'll call the joint meeting of the Cumberland Town Council and the School Committee order, also at 6:33 PM. And although it's not on the agenda, it could rise and settle as soon as possible.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to read the pre-budget consultation. Our item is pre-budget consultation and three-year forecasting pursuant to requirements of RIGL 16-221 through 16-221-3. Can't hear me without that? Okay. Let's put it up.
Sure. I'll get it started. So, thank you all. This is part of our obligatory meeting, but often is one of the few times that we ever get the chance to really talk one-on-one about some of the school-related items and the pre-budget hearing. I know there's a handout here this evening. Happy to talk at a high level, have Dr. Thornton speak about some of the budget items that we have for this year, some of the challenges we're facing, and we're here and ready to answer anything, any questions any may have for us this evening. And I'll just say I'm joined here by my committee, Dr. Thornton, Mr. Brignada, I think that's it, and some members of our administration.
I guess I'll state just for the record too that it's the council if we're missing one member, but our finance director, so go ahead, please. Do you want to start? Go ahead.
In terms of the budget we have submitted to the school committee this past week, I can tell you it really encompasses a 2.5% increase to the town side. Inside that also, I just know for the record, there is 1.1 million of fund balance in that budget request. Of the fund balance, half that number is what I would call one timers, things like computers that kind of thing. The other half is carried forward from last year's budget, the 525 that we don't roll forward, if you will. So it's really two and a half plus the 1-1 in fund balance. In terms of some of the highlights of what's in the budget, we're hoping to keep going with our Chromebook initiative. In this budget, we modeled 6, 10, 11, 12 for the Chromebooks to complete the 612 Chromebook rollout. We are looking to reopen the TV Tell studio. TV Tell wasn't Cumberland years ago, it was closed, and we're hoping to get that back open again. That's, I believe, a $25,000 line on the budget for TV Tell. Another highlight, the middle level, we're looking to really modernize what's called Tech Ed, the middle school, and what's called Project Lead the Way. It's a very robust middle school program, so we'll kind of launch that at the middle level. In terms of personnel, we're actually reducing by 3.2 individuals or also adding a few positions inside of that. In terms of the Chromebook initiative, if you do Chromebooks, we have found you need teacher, teacher tech-type people to help with that program. So right now, we went to Beach Middle School. In this budget, we have two of those folks at the high school help roll out the Chromebook for the 1,350 students plus the faculty. So those are some of the highlights, but I know the meeting tonight, a lot of part of the meeting is forecasting. We're always trying to look at one year, two years, three years ahead and see what we're going in terms of our drivers, the really things that drive our budget. As you know from the past, talking to Alex here, we have done a good job controlling costs in terms of utilities actually down over the past couple of years. Healthcare's actually down a few points from the past couple of years. The two things we can't control are the ones that really drive the budget. Pension is up. Last year with zero in the teacher column for raise, pension went up $270,000, give or take. This year with the teacher raise coming due to the raise in pensions over $500,000. The other big driver we can't control, charter school costs, RIDE projects this year, is charter, Merrell Academy, Met and Davies. That group, if you will, are over $800,000 over last year's budget. To put it in perspective, our state aid coming in from the state, the new state coming in is around 956.
957.
956, so we'll lose all but $120,000 just for the charter school expenses. It's kind of sobering as it goes up, we keep kind of having a problem. Last thing I'll say, in terms of projecting, looking at the out years, we had Alex meant to talk about the next couple of years, but I'd point you to fiscal year 19, and now that sounds far away, but it's important to think about. In fiscal year 19, that's the year the state aid seven-year rollout will kind of come to an end and kind of level out, if you will. But that's the same year, we'll still see a charter school increase. So picture this, the past couple of years, the increases in charter or pension have been kind of blunted by state increases, right? In 19, that won't be a possibility, it'll all come to the town. So if we had a similar increase for pension, it'll be 2% for charters, 1% for pension, so it'll be 3% to the town, they'll all buy a book. So kind of sobering, so I just want to point that out to you. As challenging as budgets are up to 18, 19's a real challenging year. So I can stop there, we can certainly take questions or have Alex do the three-year projection, whatever you'd like to do.
Just a quick question for you, sir. Did you say that the Chromebooks were included in your budget this year?
Right, the Chromebooks, we're now looking to do a master lease for the Chromebooks.
This would be the second half, so to speak, if we want to call it that. We did the first one last year, this would be page two, I'll call it for my position.
Sure, page two.
And, but this is now included, as you recall, it was a certain fine item last year, but now you have voted to roll it into your budget exactly.
Yes, the 651 from last year is part of the baseline, if you will, for our budget. So we're asking for two and a half percent with the maintenance of effort in the budget.
Any questions, gentlemen, if you'd like to.
Jim, I'd like to follow up on that one.
Please.
So, I recall the discussions, and thank you all for coming tonight. It's good that we all got a thorough discussion. As I recall, discussing the budget in the town was specifically separating the capital expenditures for the Chromebooks from the maintenance of effort requirement so that the town and the taxpayers wouldn't be required to increase the local appropriation on the $651,000. That's how the budget was prepared and approved. So why would the school department present something different than what's been approved? Because it's going to cause confusion at this point, because our budget has not been amended. So our local appropriation at this point, the number we're working off of, if we're going to do a two and a half percent increase in local appropriation is 39.587 million, which would mean the local appropriation request would be $989,000 at two and a half percent. That's what I'm hearing, but then when I look at your budget, it's completely different, and the numbers total almost 1.7 million instead of 989,000. So I'm wondering why the school department would present a budget that doesn't match the town-approved budget? I guess that's my question.
I'll use this, summer ups and yell, I do. Honestly, and quite frankly, we need a plan, we need a funding strategy to support the district. Part of the requests that we've made, both publicly and candidly, is the fact that that helps to bridge some of the funding deficiencies that we've had throughout, actually quite a long time within the community. Sorry. So we know that we do have competing priorities, we know that we do have tuitions that are making it challenging for the community to plan for this activity, so that was part, this is part of the request, is that that additional funding is moved into the local appropriation for the school department.
So that would require a budget amendment, I guess on our side, we put it into local appropriation, and then we can be talking about a two and a half percent increase on that number, which is obviously a much bigger number because now it has an extra $651,000 in it.
Well, the money's presently in the overall town budget, so it's not an amendment to increase the overall budget, it would be transferring the money to a different line item, which would be the school department.
And make it part of the maintenance of effort?
It would make it part of the maintenance of effort, and we're happy to have that discussion with regard to maintenance of effort and really what has happened over time and what the obligations are around that. I have slides, but we don't have a projector, but we can certainly do that at another time. Because I think it's an important conversation to have about how these increases have occurred and where, and you see the co-operations that we've had. The money's not going into instruction and instructional support, the money's going into operations and our other commitments. That's not where we want to be driving money towards students, but we're finding the mandated obligations are preventing us from moving it to instruction and instructional support.
Right, and you'll concur on that, that presently it's sitting on the, it's sitting on the town, Chromebooks in particular, sitting on the town side of the budget with a "awarded", if that's a proper word.
Other than the fact that it would take an amendment, I mean, the bottom line would not change, but you're moving monies from one department to another, so it would be an amendment.
I'd go to Alex for a projection, if that's okay?
Sure, absolutely.
Maybe not.
We just got this now, right? You provided the county, okay, so I can just want to know that.
Yeah, I'll take all the time that you took, I'll throw it back. And just on the maintenance of effort topic, I think that when Councilman Landby was talking about capital items and that type of stuff, I think the intent of that law is capital items that are like one-time, you know, non-recurring events. For example, if the town gave us $651,000 to repair a roof, the roof's repaired, it should be that 651 next year. The items we bought were kind of like math work books that we'll have to buy again next year, Chromebooks that are like 250 bucks a piece, they're not really capital-type items. You know, they're things that we're going to buy every, we're going to buy each and every year, not different amount, excuse me, different amounts. And so I think that's why we kind of see it as, you know, it really should be, that money really is buying things that are, should, that bring a fall out of that maintenance of effort category, but that's.
However, just to make it clear, that was awarded as a one-time expense, although I think we all set and knew that eventually you'd have to replace those, but you may not have to replace all, I forget how many Chromebooks there were, so.
Right, so anyhow, if I could take you through the sheet, basically, basically the first pages are various revenues that the school department has, and you can see how I've kind of broken out local appropriation kind of by years. So you see in 2015 where we had the 1,547, which was your 896 plus the 651, comes to that 1,547, we had it all as town appropriation, whether it came from fund balance or whatever, it was town appropriation. The 651 that we use in 16, if we get that 651, I carry it all the way across because we're hoping that it is maintenance of effort, and so thus it would be ultimately 17 and 18 years' budget as well. And the 1,500,000 that we're asking for, that two and a half percent on top of the, outside the 651, the two and a half percent, 1,500,000 carried across because once again, if that comes as town appropriation, it would be in 16's budget, 17, 18, it continues. For 17 and 18, for this presentation, I've shown no appropriation from the town, so that when we get to the last page, the gap that we'll see doesn't include any money at this point from the town. Our other revenues, the other item that kind of stands out, fund balance this year, the $600,000 in 16. Once again, I don't know what 17 and 18 will bring, I don't show any fund balance. We've been successful as, again, finance director and council members who've been on the council for a couple of years, in being able to balance our budgets, revenues and surpluses that we budget most of the year, and having the bandwidth to roll forward and to help blunt whatever requests we have to ask of the town the next year. So that 525 is basically, we've increased it to 600,000 in 16, with no estimate for fund balance at this point. So revenues in that area, obviously with no money from the town and no money from, no surpluses, you know, I'd say a little bit conservative at this point. If you go to the next page, you start seeing, you know, you start seeing how we break it down, the summary, I show salaries for our year-round administrators, ICSI employees, the teachers, and then our Paris, which are not full, they're not full 52-week employees, and then services, materials, maintenance, and capital. So what I do is I apply various assumptions to all these line items, which well, I'll take it through in a second, but you can see, for example, Ashton, you can see what the budgets have been in 16, recommended, projections 17, 18. That last number is the average growth per year over the last, since FY13. So the Ashton budgets grow 1.2% in, one, two, three, four, in this five, six-year period. And so you can see that all the way down, so you can take a look at some of the line items in the budget and see what the growth trends have been. The next several pages are just all the schools, all the departments that go on through. If you go to, you know, page five, for example, special education, this is one of the budget drivers that the superintendent's talked about. The district's done a pretty good job of bringing, well, not a pretty good job, a very good job of bringing children that might have been an expensive place to centers back into, back into the district by building capacity, building certain programs, autism, ALP, et cetera, et cetera. And so you can actually see over time, it's been a 2.2% reduction in special ed. I would then maybe take you to page nine.
What are the company's second from the back?
Oh, the page numbers, the page numbers, so let me just, the page numbers are kind of up in here.
Excuse me, because I have some cold, apparently expecting my eyes in my ears.
The page numbers, I'll just, a couple of things that could be a little bit confusing. Down the bottom, before I get to my toes, you see staffing, steps, et cetera, see negotiated raises. The budget in 16 that we're passing, right now it's a reduction of 3.2 people, there'll probably be a couple of additional on top of that, because that staffing number, we've built in, $172,000 bracketed number. At this point, the budget's not balanced, it would even be balanced through breakage that will occur during the year or further reductions that will happen somewhere along the line.
And also on that note, come printing time of this budget last week, I had a question, I have one answered to that already. I'll probably be reducing one kindergarten at Cumberland Hill. I didn't have that number last week, so I kind of held it out. So if it costs 65,000 of that number, so it'd be down to around a 105, how would that happen?
So that 172 bracketed, once again, whatever we do to get that, we'd have to achieve every single year to keep the budget balanced, that's why you see it going across. The steps, the 16 budget has steps, everything included in it, but rather than show the steps in each one of those summary accounts, I just take what I think the steps will be pretty much, and I put them in at the end, rather than, so if you look at a teacher's salaries, like at Ashton, if we go back to page one, you see the salaries to 1,547 in 16, I'm showing the same 1,547 the next year, the steps aren't built in there because I'd have to go in and calculate every single person and do that math into the summary thing. It's just easy to take the total of what I think the steps should be and put them at the end so that I know they're included in the total for this exercise. So that's 600,000 is my estimated steps for next year, and it's 600,000 again in 18, but once again, the 600,000 we give out in 17 doesn't go away, so it carries forward, that's why it's a million two. So it's 600,000 in 17, and in 18 it's a million two, it's the $600,000 step being repeated because once they have a step increase, they don't give it back the next year, it carries forward into the next budget, and then the new additional, $600,000. So that's why I see that's six and one, two. Then the last item there is what the cost of the ICSI contract will be in 2017, 137,000, and same thing, I did go, you know, raises for that group, custodians were different than building, secretaries, which were different from part-time parent tax. So go in and try to figure each one of those people in the summary sheet, I just know what the portal would be, I plug it in here at the end, it'll carry forward. So if you unlook at those line items, you'd see the same numbers going across, there are raises that'll be given out, they're just shown here at the end. So anyhow, you see the overall budget's a 4.4% increase over this time period, and a good part of it coming at the end of this cycle because of the 4% teacher raise that we're having. But if you were to back out the two items that Dr. Thornton was talking about, that are kind of out of our control, pension and the charter school tuitions, you see that little note to the side, rate totals, it'd be 2.8% average growth in the budget over time if we didn't have, if we weren't, you know, getting abnormally high increases in those two line items.
Can you explain the teacher raise, Alex?
Yeah, sure. The teacher raise, there's been some confusion on that, but we did when we negotiated that raise. First of all, we got a significant number of language changes that we felt were important for student learning. We also got things like reductions of four days in sick time, which is a costly item for us because, you know, when I call him sick or he calls him sick, they don't replace us, but when a teacher calls him sick, you have to replace the person. So it's a savings in the sub-wide item, by the less sick day is available, once a person exceeds that, they would go unpaid. So, and there were other changes that we got, you know, as far as increases in healthcare, copayments of 22%, which, you know, probably on the high side for other public school districts. You know, a lot of districts are starting to get there, but we've been in that 20, 21, 22% for the last several years. That's a copay that they pay out of their, you know, what they pay towards healthcare costs. But what we did is we went zero, zero the first two years, and 4% the last year, and I've heard people say, oh, you kind of kicked the can. No, we didn't kick the can because we took all the compounding out of it. If you were given 1 and a third each year, 1 and a third, 1 and a third, 1 and a third, the same 4%, the net effect of the compounding would be an 8% cost, odds is a true 4% in that time period. So we actually saved 4% by doing it that way, by having them for go raises the first two years. They also made changes in lanes, you know, started, they gave up lanes, they took half their lane, they got half their paid, you know, teachers get, if they have masters, they get an additional pay for that, they gave up half of that. They also gave up a half a step, they took their step six months into the year rather than at the beginning of the school year, and they deferred one step into this year. So there was some significant concessions we thought. The average cost, I think, over three years was about 600,000 bucks, you know, for the contract a year. So, I love that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if that covers it. So if we go to the next.
Sorry, I don't mean to do this. Is there any way we can get a projector? I would have assumed there would have been one available. Can we find out if one's available? And if we can't, then we'll do without, but I think the visual might.
Okay, so.
Thanks. Thanks, sir.
And also, contracts in general, I get about contracts in Cumberland, it's about the first couple of years, it started in like 2010. They've been like, over six years, or four years, or seven years, and they're four years with zeros. There was a two and a half, a 4%, I think, a 0.75 one year. So the average 2.7% across those seven years, the teacher contracts I had, so a little history on that. If you go to the last page, page 10, you see the gaps of 2.1 million in 17 and 4.7 in 18. Now, like, 4.7 is compounding, if you're satisfied, once you balance the 2.1 in 17, the gap for 18 goes to 2.6 because of, unless there, we were one-time solutions that didn't carry forward. And you can see my assumptions, and, you know, I'll take you through some of the assumptions because I think it's important to understand what's in there.
Does anyone have any questions so far? You know, we've covered a lot of material.
When is the current teacher's contract expiration?
Excuse me, I didn't.
Current teacher's contract expiration?
This is last year, this 12% is of their year.
So you're renegotiating at current?
This fall, oh, it'll be signed, right.
Do you want to have it signed before school starts?
That would be the intention to do it in advance of that.
Another quick question, Alex, the, I know you held back some steps, okay, is, will that have been caught up now or is there still any, is there any future?
There's actually one, one contract that the teachers, the teachers have, in some instances, have really stepped up. There was a raise that was due, and they deferred it over 14 years. So if you were a step one teacher, you weren't getting that at Cumberland at the time, you weren't going to see that money for 14 years. So it was like four savings, but with no interest or whatever. You know, they deferred a million something dollar raise, which we were able to the next, over these 14 years, from small amounts of money that fit into the budget without having to raise at one time. So, but that's kind of like the deferral that's out there, but it's, you know, it's budget, we know what the mom is, it's not a big impact, there's no big impact that's going to be in there.
When does that come in?
We did that in 2010.
So.
Each year's a budget line of, say, $50,000, give or take, small.
If I come back and do that in 2024, I'm sorry.
No, 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 they'll just all have it by then, they'll all have been paid.
Okay, right, so you do it every year here.
Right. The reason it was 14 years is because there were so many teachers at the top step that we did it by, you know, we worked over 30 years, those people got it back, you had it 25 to 30 years, and then it gets down to the people over step nine at that time, they'll all get it, step eight, they'll all get it, you know, right on down, down, till we get to the step ones. But it was, it was, if you were a step one, two, three teacher, there's no way to help your parents see that money. So, might not even be in the district, but anyhow. So the assumptions that make up these projections, once again, there's no increase in positions reflected in 17 and 18, so what's in the budget this year would be, you know, there's no, there's been no added positions in the 17, 18, 18 year. The certified salaries, it's 4% in 2016, so that's included in the raise, zero in 17, and then I've just put in 1.5, I don't know, maybe it'll be zero, maybe it'll be less than 1.5, but something in, so that we have a discussion. I think, I didn't want to so underestimate if I say, oh, then there'll be a raise again and that type of stuff. That may or may not be the number, maybe more, maybe less, we'll see how negotiations go. The non-certified people is based on the anticipated negotiation contract they have in 16 and 17, you know, will inspire them. Healthcare claims and administrative costs, 5% increases, plus we put in the Affordable Care Act fee, that will be, that'll be part of our budget going forward, the payment that you make towards Obamacare. The healthcare claims, a 5% increase. And then in 17 and 18, through healthcare changes that we're going to have to achieve in order to stay out of things like the Cadillac tax, et cetera, we're saying that we will keep healthcare costs in this projection level for the next two years.
So what do you think about that number?
Well, the Cadillac taxes through the Affordable Care Act, once a pension, once a pension, once a healthcare plan reaches a certain value, and I believe that's 28.5, the value of the government plan being 28.5, a Cadillac, because it's the expense, the Cadillac, as they call it, that plan would be taxable, 20% of that care would be taxable. So the employees are sort of on a 40% tax on their healthcare plan, on a 28,000 dollar plan. So by changes in healthcare.
40% for every dollar above that, or 40% at the dollar mark?
40, no, above the 40%.
Above that now, of course.
And, and so, somewhere without the plan, plan, so through plan design change, through, now copays don't even count. Copays, like a copay, if I go to the doctor and I'm paying 20 now, and that would go to 25, that would count. But if I change the copay from 22% to 25, but don't change the richness of the plan, that doesn't soften the blow. So it's going to have to be through plan change, plan design change, you know, with things like, what health pay to 50, maybe it'll have to be health pay 500, health pay 1,000, whatever that will bring this plan and allow us to keep the same working-type raise that we have in today's, so that's kind of an important assumption in this plan, with healthcare costs being such, you know, a large number. Delta Dental, we have a 3% increase in there, I think Brian did put the year in our contract with Delta Dental.
Year two.
Year two or three, I think it's a 3% increase this year. I've just worked with 3% Delta Dental, and maybe, you know, there's things you can do, self-insured, gamble that way and stuff, but for this presentation, I've just assumed 3%. The non-certified, certified contribution rates, I'm using the averages of that, 9% non-certified, 7% non-certified rates again, so I'm moving those through. A small inflation factor of 1.025. Utilities, fuel insurance, a 3% increase, now, you know, we have actually right now, kind of like, we went up to, we locked in our utility rates in 2016. our utility rates in 2013 when the market was like almost historically low because of the economy. And, you know, so that 3% may be optimistic because we recently went out through an RFP, and the number we got, which was 28% low, and if we were floating with the electric company month to month, was still 24% higher than those rates that we were in, you know, '13. That increases in this budget at this time. People I've worked with at Burton Energy recommended we hold off going again in April because they think that rates might have been a little bit artificially affected with the four, five, six weeks of heavy winter we had in this area. They think that rates might have been a little bit higher, and they hope that they'll see a decline in the spring. But it still won't be the rates that we had back in 2013, our kilowatts in DeKalb, Berks and the rest of them. So, but there's a 3% in here. Our transportation reflects the actual schedule that we've been negotiating. It's a two and a half percent increase a year with Durham plus. Special ed services and special ed tuitions, 3% increases, which, you know, there's a, you know, sometimes tuition can go from $77,000 to $90,000 in one year, depending on the placement, placement that the students have, but in some of the long haul, there'll be maybe reductions in kids. It's an estimate now, is, we've actually been living within that number and actually bringing it down a little bit. So hopefully that, we still will. The facilities, the facilities, I put $450,000 in here a year. I think everyone knows we're trying to go through Rhode Island Department of Education with a stage 2 application so that we can do some health and safety items in our schools. That probably costs somewhere between $4 and $5 million. The finance director's on that building committee, so we're aware of it. We'd like to, we, right now, there's a moratorium that I guess the governor's left when she announced the other night, her budget address, there's going to be some amount of money put in there. But the rules are going to be different. Right now, anything that kind of goes before RIDE, that's a health and safety issue, kind of gets automatically approved. And so we're really, our goal is to make sure that this, actually, the report is going to go to the mayor and the finance director tomorrow on the 17th, and it'll be submitted to RIDE on the 23rd, so that we hopefully get that, you know, get approved under the old rules. We don't know what the new rules will be for things like health and safety. And so this $450,000 would allow for maybe a 10-year lease, where our asset's going to be that, we would put in a portion of that $450, maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars a year towards a lease payment, and the town would fund the other half of that to do these important health and safety issues. That will still give us a couple hundred thousand dollars in our budget to do needed repairs that are going to come up. We can't have every penny be locked into a lease and then have no ability to fix up a water heater or whatever could break, you know, during the year of the 8 and 9 buildings that we operate. And then, and then the last, um, you see the charter schools, see existing enrollments and an increase of about $650,000 a year. Right now, with the state schools, DABs, that, and the charter schools, like the superintendent's set, RIDE is estimating an $823,000 increase in '16. I give $650,000 each of the next years. So that's kind of the assumptions on the appropriation side. On the revenue side, there's a few there. You see the state aid funding based on RIDE estimates, '16, '17, and '18 of $952,000 each year, that's what we're getting this year. There'll be two years left, the amounts should be very close to those. And then, like Phil mentioned, in '19, there won't be any further increase in that. So that 18 million change that you see in the '18 of the state aid will kind of be flat or could go down a little bit, reduce student population or up, let's say, student population, but there won't be any 8, 900,000 dollar increases. The town appropriation is the two and a half percent increase is '16, plus the 650 will, the town provided from fund balance of '15, we've talked a little bit about that. Medicaid is level funded, Section 125 copayments, 5% increase in '17. I mean, that should be '16 and 0 in '17. And then there's, this last couple, like, there was literacy in Article 31. If you look at our balance sheet, these are dollars that we've had on the balance sheet for a while that we were bringing in a little bit at a time. Once we signed the last teacher contract, we knew '16 was going to be a tough year. We've left those monies on the balance sheet to use them this year, and so we'll take those in. They're part of the 1.1 in one-time revenues that the superintendent's talking about. Once we use those, we won't have those in future years. And then the undesignated fund balance is $600,000 that I mentioned in '16 and '17 and '18. It's kind of the major line items, the major line items and the assumptions that I've made on that. So, any questions I'm trying to answer? And I know you just got this, and if anyone, even tonight walks out of here and later on, look at, ask a question, just please email me, I'll make sure I get the answer and I'll send it to all members of the council, so that everyone gets the same response.
Do you have any questions? I want to exclude you, although.
No, I have one, just from, I believe the Chromebooks in the current year, they were, I believe they were in your technology budget.
Yeah.
The 517 that you're looking for for next year, I don't see.
I've moved it to the, I've moved it to the schools where they really should be out of location. We had a little technology budget because Mike buys them and manages and everything. But if you look at the North Cumberland, you'll see $94,000. If you look at the Core, you'll see $80,000. If you look at the high school, you'll see $349,000. And that will tie out to that $517,000 number for lease proceeds, or lease revenue on the '16 budget.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Alex, so including the Chromebooks, the 651, what is your requested increase?
What else did we buy with the 651?
Two and a half percent on top of the 651.
On top of the 651?
Add the 651, please, save me a minute. You add the 651, three and a half percent?
No, it would be like 4, 4.2, did you say, or whatever? You mean that 4%.
It would be the maximum 4%. Okay, Brian? Based on today, that 4% would translate into what percent increase in the tax rate?
If they were to get.
4%, let's just assume it was 4%.
The 1.6, we're saying, or 1.7, or a fleet.
On 60 million?
How's that say, yeah?
I think.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah. On 60 million, if the school committee got an extra million dollars.
Can you talk a bit about the local appropriation?
If they got a million six, which I think is what they're asking for in total.
Right.
Is that, is that right?
Yes.
A million, a million and 656 or 657. Right, a million six divided by 60 million, which is approximately the total townwide levy, would be an increase in the overall town tax rate of 1.65% just for the school department.
Right.
That doesn't include anything else in town.
That's the number I was looking for. The reason I was looking for that is, I think you all know me well, so I'm very sensitive to charter school tuitions and the effect on your budget. One of the things that I'm going to ask you now to be sensitive to the town is the inevitable increase on the fire district tax, which will result in a tax increase of 2% to roughly a quarter of the town, like a percent and a half. The other question, counsel, I'm not sure we have those facts yet, so.
We don't have the fact, but.
No, but start your sentence or start your statement by saying, I'm guessing, that's all. Because I don't think that's, we don't have it established as yet. I don't want to go up and speculate and say, oh, we're going to have this or we're going to have that. We don't have it as yet. I don't know what it's going to be, and I just, I'm hesitant to guess or to make a statement like that, to it's going to be one quarter of the town, or one half of the town, or whatever.
I think Mr. Skullen could support me, and you can certainly reference what's been reported publicly. The best guess, estimate, is a $2 tax rate per town, based on a $74 in Cumberland Hill and $65 in North Cumberland. Those are the numbers. Whether you call it a guess or not, it's going to happen. In any event, the reason I bring that up is because if you ask for the 1.65%, couple that with what the fire district will result in, it's just something I need you to be aware of. If you, it's a youth problem that's going to hit this year. I don't know whether, and it's a guess, but it's going to be pretty close. And as Mr. Landry said, that was before an increase in the municipal side. So it's just something I ask you to be aware of. It's kind of.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Couple of things I actually, four items. One is, it sounds as though the tone of the discussion earlier was that, that when the town did the budget last year, and we specifically, and the mayor specifically allocated a $651,000 line item specifically separate from maintenance of effort, discuss it, it was capital in nature. Now, the tone is, it's not really capital, it's maintenance of effort. So we're going to go ahead and put it in our local appropriation on our budget, because that's the way we want it.
We never changed our budget. Our budget has always showed the $1.547 from the time. If you, in the budget reports I send you each and every month, you'll see that, in our top appropriation, I show $651,000.
So, it sounds as though then we need to be very careful. If we're going to do that again this year, then it sounds as though we have to be very careful to put that money. It's basically, my understanding was, it was a step in a direction the town didn't want to, it was difficult for the town to afford the line item, but we put it in the middle so we wouldn't be obligated to pay it in the future. It sounds like the school committee's, the school department's posture is, it should be part of the maintenance of effort. So I think it's important for the town council and the mayor's office to understand that if that's going to be the posture of the school committee, then we're going to have to think twice about doing that this year. Is that?
How is that? How does it posture, I think, state law? Maybe the ruling on it, I think, finds 651 is maintenance of effort, it just is.
What is capital?
It's not, maintenance of efforts, not capital. Chromebooks aren't capital.
So we would, we would have, did it say in the budget was for Chromebooks, or was it for capital related items? Because you did spend $651,000 on capital repairs this year, right?
We spent the 651 on workbooks, Chromebooks.
Can I just clarify on the we spending? Every dollar that's come out of the 651, the town has paid, they have not paid, the schools have not paid, that has come out of the town account. We have not reimbursed the schools for any of that money, the town has cut those checks directly to the vendors.
So what does that mean?
I'm just saying, when, when being addressed that they were buying, we bought it for this, I'm just clarifying that the town expended those funds, not the schools' money.
Does that help or hurt the argument or position that it's maintenance of effort?
I was, I was insisting on that.
That it's not maintenance of effort?
Well, that we pay for it. It's coming out of the town's budget, we were going to cut the check directly to the vendors.
Okay, so apparently, we're going to have to be more careful this budget season about what we put in that line item, because the posture is, it's part of maintenance of effort, and we don't need to get into a disagreement. We want it to be for capital related items, it was computer equipment. Granted, it's computer equipment that might need replacing in two or three years, but it was very clear, it was very clear that it was never meant to be part of the maintenance of effort, that's why it was segregated on that line.
And that's why this year, we're asking for it to be considered in part of the ask this year.
Okay.
We are challenged, and we can go over a, I don't know the words, but we can go over a few points of information about, we asked last year about having a plan, is our BEP funded? We've been challenged, we've struggled with that, we still maintain that it's not adequately funded, the state is meeting its obligation based on the statute and the law that it's defined, and our local contribution is something that, because we have competing priorities within the school community, it was maintained in our budget, whether it's our costs, pension costs, or tuition increases, it's become incredibly problematic to look toward areas that would improve instruction. And that's, if you don't mind, I'll advance to that, or if you have another question?
I agree, I'd like to address, if you don't mind, thank you. The other item I wanted to address is the discussion about the ability of the school department to keep the health plans on a Cadillac status of 28 grand a year. It's a good idea, in fact, it's a requirement. I mean, the people who pay the bills in this town don't have anywhere near $28,000 worth of health coverage. They're lucky if they have $15,000 a year of cost.
Well, we know, even if that's what the threshold will be, and we want to make sure we don't get anything there.
I would hope we don't get there, because the people paying the bills are, the people getting, paying the bills, as you probably know, are getting saddled with higher deductibles at work, copays at work, so that they can afford the premium.
I don't want people to think that that's what I'm saying, it doesn't cost that.
But we're, but we're talking about how the school department's going to do a job and keeping it away from 28. I hope we're far from that.
You know, I just want to point out again, though, that Cumberland's teachers pay one of the highest copays, if not the highest copay in the state, at 22%.
And the plan.
So we're way ahead of that hurdle already.
The plan design is pretty progressive as far as the prescriptions and emergency room business. Much more progressive than what you find in other.
So probably we're not even near, anywhere near Cadillac design, you know. Okay. And the other item, I had two other items. One is the history that we were talking about. Four years ago, in 2012, the school department budget was 52 million, 52.4 million, I believe, in 2012. Now, we're looking at a $62 million budget in four years, a $10 million increase. It's a, in four years, it's a 19% increase in four years. Our tax base hasn't gone up 19% in the last four years, which means the tax appropriation and/or state aid has to go up to fund that $10 million bill. And at some point, the money well dries up, it's just difficult to ask, as much as we all need, need, want, this $10 million increase is an awful lot in four years. In 2012, the appropriate, the town, the school budget was $52 million. And this year, we're asking in 2016 for it to be $62 million. And we understand, I understand, you know I understand, that the charter schools have drained several million dollars out of the system. But we've been, we've received state aid from that, that was supposed to be earmarked for tax relief, it was supposed to help relieve our taxpayers. Instead, the taxpayers are being asked to contribute more and more to the school department. We've got to do more with less, just like our residents do. I'm sorry, I have to, I have to state that for the record, and I also, I have to, also, I have to ask, $10 million in four years is an awful lot of money to ask. We know, I know, that there were three years the school department was level funded before Dr. Thornton's arrival, right towards the tail end. And, and it was during some very difficult economic times. The town has stepped up, it's done its part, but now I really think, we've got to ask, we've got to ask the school department to try a little bit harder, because these requests are just, the base, the tax base, and the residents that pay the bills here can't, can't afford these types of increases. And lastly, I want to point out relative to history is, the most recent history on the financial side of the school was, we had planned on using about $525,000 of our surplus in the most recent audit that was just finished last June, and we didn't use that surplus, and we actually added to the surplus $620,000. In the current budget that we're being asked to look at here, we're only using $600,000 of the surplus, which means we forgot about the other 500 that we just, we just added to it. We, in other words, we budgeted, we said we were going to use 533, we didn't use it, and we added 600. So now we have 1.3. Just looking at those two numbers, and now we're, we're only going to use 600 this coming year. I think the taxpayers would want to say, listen, if you got the extra money out of town appropriation, and you ended up with a surplus of $600,000, why can't you use that into your most recent request? Why can't you roll that in so that you're not asking for 1 million, you're only asking for 400,000, particularly where some of that money's going to be used for capital repairs? So I would, I would like to see that we use some of this prior year surplus that we didn't use, and the money we added to the surplus fund, I'd like to see it budgeted in there for 2016, before we lose sight of it, because we've been doing that, you know, over the years. We've said we're going to use surplus, and then we don't, we add to it.
But when we don't use it, we always roll it right back into the budget the next year.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
To minimize, to minimize the amount of money that we'd be asking.
We're not doing that this year, because we said, Alex, let me just finish it. I want to be really clear on it, because we said we were going to use 500,000, and we didn't, and then we added 600,000. That's 1.2, 1.1 million that we should have in the current budget, because we were planning because we were planning on using five hundred, and we added six hundred. And, and now, instead of one point one million, we have six hundred thousand in the budget. So, there's at least five hundred thousand just, that's being left in the kitty, and I think the taxpayers, they wanna get some of that money back. I mean, that surplus, as you know, and I just wanna make it clear, because I went through the order reports this morning, in two thousand and nine, the town surplus in the school department was two point three million dollars in two thousand and nine. Just flash forward a couple of years, what's it, six or seven years, not even, we're at three eight, we're at three eight now, from two point three. I mean, it's getting to a point where, even at the state level, when I testify, they're questioning, why are you looking for more money from the state? Why don't you use some of your surplus? And, and you know I'm there to defend the school, I was there to defend our school department and our town, but, in reality, we need to take a look, harder look at it, okay? Just wanna point it out.
Yeah, if I could just respond to the surplus issue. The surplus is three point eight, two hundred and thirty thousand of that is for items, what we've done in the past, if we haven't had to, you know, if we balance our budget, items that are kinda left over the end of the year, because I try to tell the principals, don't spend every penny that you have, just because you're afraid you won't get money next year. I think that's too often, times over years past, that was the attitude, oh, I have a hundred, I have a five thousand dollars left in this item, I better spend it, or you might not give it to me next year. I've tried to tell them, you can come in June thirtieth, if you need to buy something, I'll buy it for you. I don't freeze them, because that's ridiculous, someone breaks a copy machine, you know, and I need a fifty dollar pot, I've gotta freeze on, so we're not gonna produce copies. That stuff's all just, you know, it's nice to talk about, but it's not reality. But anyhow, as they run surpluses and line items by not spending money just to spend it, I put it into an educational supply line item, that's part of that, three point eight. That two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is included in this budget this year, we're gonna have to use all of that, and when you get the budget, there'll be a page that'll show you that two thirty, and the items that will purchase them of that two thirty. Tried to purchase items that are one-time purchases, so that we wouldn't have, you know, how we're gonna find that next year. Also, the one thirty nine and one forty six, these are on the first page, you can see them down bottom of the schedule. Those are those dollars we had on the balance sheet that we, that we're spending this year, they won't be available to us in the remaining year, and the six hundred thousand, that's one point one million dollars. If we start putting one point seven, two million dollars, how do we replace that for next year? We would have such a budget gap going in, we'd have to find two million dollars before we bought the first book. You can't put three, two, three million dollars in a budget, and, you know, one-time sources and balance your budget the next year.
But you spoke to.
Too many people's got, too many districts and towns do that, when they don't wanna face a tough decision, just, you know, push everything in there and kick the can down the road, that's kicking the can down the road, and then they end up with big budget gaps the next year, instead of tax increases or broken levies that, of one or two percent they can cover things, they're looking at seven, eight, nine percent increases to cover those type of things.
In two thousand three, in two thousand thirteen, we budgeted to use school surplus of one point two sixty.
Yes, and we were bringing, and this year, it's one point one, for one-time things. And, we actually, we're doing our best to get, well, that, because the pressure of running a one point two million dollar surplus is very difficult, as we are trying to keep our fund balance at where it is. If it grows a little bit, it does, but, you know, I wouldn't wanna put the one point two in there and use it, it's only, you know, it's only, you know, it's, we have a two to four percent fund balance policy, our fund balance on the dollars that are attached to anything is three point seven seven, it's right there. Once it gets to four percent, every dollar that goes in the surplus automatically goes into capital repairs, that you won't have to issue bonds for, if you had, you know what I mean? Because it'll go into capital repairs, and we'll do capital improvements in the buildings, that's the way it's set up. It doesn't go, it doesn't all continue to build forever.
Just one quick one, yesterday you spoke to Ryan about surplus, they had said, I think this district with over a million in surplus, the budget is calling it a distressed community, so they have really said it's a bad idea.
I don't know if they'll come out and talk to the town council, talk to the school committee about, bad idea, using this amount of money as one-time solutions. Another part of that three point eight million, we're doing all sorts of things with building repairs and stuff that, you know, like I said, Rides wear, we have about four hundred and fifty something thousand dollars in there, that's reserved for capital items. We need to establish a capital reserve fund, and have a capital reserve fund with Rhode Island Department of Education, before they'll allow us to approve our, you know, funding for projects we wanna do, so that we'll be eligible for the forty one percent reimbursement we get when we do an improvement, do a building. So, that four fifty is kinda earmarked, the two thirty is being used, there's, you know, there's more of it being used than maybe you think.
Excuse me one second, they have to change tape, it's just gonna pause for a minute, we have one hour of tape.
My battery's gonna run out of my laptop.
Let's just.
So, I hope that kinda explains some of the surplus.
Just hang on one minute, we're just gonna pause for a moment, gentlemen, James.
I'll say, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so the one point one million we use, and I think they're pushing fund balance, use the fund balance setting high on the platform, exasperate seventeen and eighteen, we already see some balances. Now, I think, there'll be some surplus we'll use, because we hope to continue to balance our budgets, and there'll be some, hopefully we'll have another amount, there'll be some town appropriation, that two million dollars will be greatly reduced by those two things, but I just haven't shown this presentation. We are using one point one million in two thousand sixteen, which is a, you know, thirty percent of a surplus.
All right, battery's on low. I have three slides. And, what I really wanted to start talking about was how district funds are directed. So, as we want to reduce the school department's budget, some of these other commitments that we have are completely out of our control. If we could charge for transportation, if we could provide pay-to-play sports, but we can't do any of that, we're totally limited. So, any of the areas where we could potentially charge fees, like Massachusetts does, we cannot do, we're limited from doing it. You'll see, I'm sorry, this is a little blurry, but over, over three years, from twelve to fourteen, our face-to-face teaching costs have remained fairly stagnant, in spite of the fact that we've had additional funding for the district, in spite of the fact that the town has provided additional appropriation, what you see is, the face-to-face teaching and the per pupil teacher support aren't really going anywhere. And, that's, that's the challenge that we have, is we've contended that we believe our BEP is not adequately funded. That and the leadership line item are the three essential categories for us, for education. The other two areas, operations, just running your schools, keeping the buildings going, and other commitments, those are the ones that are seeing significant cost increases. And, that presents the challenge, it's operations, that's, that's our challenge for us, it's not education. We've been able to keep those costs in check, but unfortunately, it's limited in what we've been able to provide for students. So, while, we can certainly say that our pension costs have increased pretty substantially over time, and we can say that our tuition costs have increased quite significantly over time, the cost for students is not. So, that, that is enormously problematic for us, as we try to get into twenty-first century technology, and I'll talk a little bit about student achievement in a moment. We know every dollar matters, and just to give you some indication, Blackstone Valley Preps per pupil expenditure is twelve, about twelve thousand fifty six dollars, and Cumberland's is twelve two eighty. Both are the lowest funded districts in the state. Blackstone Valley Prep is lower than Cumberland's, and I think it really matters when you start to look at some of the other numbers, and this is really blurry, so I apologize, we're the blurry yellow one, in the middle there, but what I want you to focus on is item three, four, and five. It talks about, I can't change the color, it's clip art, it talks a little bit about where money goes towards education. And, if you look at our numbers, we spend forty nine nineteen on elementary school students, the next lower one of the subgroups that I grabbed is One Socket. We know that they have significant and severe financial issues, and you can see they're decimating their school system by just cutting it. So, while, it may sound great on paper to hold, hold the line on taxes and cut programs, we're just a stone's throw away from what One Socket pays for its educational program. The other area is in middle school, you can see again, we're at twenty one forty five, Lincoln pays thirty two thirty one, Blackstone Valley Prep pays thirty five twenty eight. If you subtract out the difference between Blackstone Valley Prep's other areas, from about the area of line six all the way to thirty five, there's a difference of about a thousand dollars. So, BB Prep, because it doesn't have obligations about a district, tuitions, retiree benefits, which ours will now be zero, it's presently forty eight in this report, but it'll be zero for the next fiscal year, for fiscal fourteen, these are fiscal thirteen numbers, that's what is available to us from Ride. It's very hard to look at our school program and say, we're not fiscally responsible, we're not enormously efficient. You can look at any of the UCOA data, and we can walk through it. Our responsibilities beyond instruction are minor in comparison to other school communities. We are intensely supportive of being responsible to the school community, but where we're lacking is the elementary and the middle school and the high school programs. To contribute twenty seven sixty four, and have Alan Tenrero tweet twenty-four seven about how awesome our school program is, and to recognize that our SAT scores are going up, and our graduation scores are going up, they are, you know, we owe them a debt of gratitude to be able to do what they're doing on the dimes that we give them. It's unfortunate that what we continue to talk about is our pension, what we need to talk about is our school programs. Our school programs are lacking in resources to support instruction, they're lacking in facilities, as we're all aware, you walk into the schools, and while we're painting them and trying to make them bright cherry places, they're pretty darn run down. And, with the hope that the school housing aid will change to the benefit of school communities through some restructuring, you know, the hope is we can have a better roof over our head, but we're compromising our school programs, without any question in my mind. We had achievements sub the other day, part of the concern that the committee has, is that we don't have adequate resources for kids who are struggling. We aren't closing the achievement gap for those students in a timely manner. So, we are doing, like, like many of you have attended with us, a tour, where each of the schools are coming to talk with us. And, the reality is, they need time, and they need staff and resources. We're going to try, we're gonna add into this budget the ability to provide more resources for RTI. We are so far away from offering things like gifted programs, that would challenge all students in our committee, community, because right now, we're barely able to offer the lower threshold of kids, the resources that they need. So, you know, we have to start talking about rebuilding our educational program, because if you look at every single line item here, we are virtually at the bottom of every one. It makes no sense to talk about cutting, when, when all we have in front of us, there's nothing, we're, we're second to One Socket. We don't wanna be there. I don't mean any disrespect with regard to that, and I know you are in a difficult spot, and I can respect the fact that there are a fire district tax, but the, the students in Cumberland deserve our very best effort, our very best strategizing on how to make this better. We had talked years ago about consolidation of schools, so that we could have sister schools, that would've provided us savings, but the community said, we want neighborhood schools, and that's really essential for us, to offer that. Neighborhood schools are a great program for our school community, the community wanted it, we have to support it. The other thing I think we're gonna discuss at the school committee during our budget meetings, is to talk about changing the start time at the high school. It is absolutely a hundred percent connected to student achievement, and for us to continue to do this to service to our students is wrong. They deserve to have great scores, and the fact that we blow them out of bed at six o'clock in the morning, to be there at seven o'clock, is not effective, it's not a good use of our resources, it's not a good use of our time. So, I know I got on a little bit of a rant today, I apologize for that, I'm more than happy to look through the UCOA data with you, so that you, and you, so that the council and the committee can make some informed decisions about this, because this community deserves a great educational program, and we are barely keeping our heads above water. And on that note, I thank you for that opportunity, and I don't know how to transition out of this stuff.
Could I ask you a favor, could you supply a hot copy to the, to the clerk, so that she can include that?
I can email that to her, and I actually have some other information that's very relevant.
For those of us that couldn't see the screen, maybe it would be a bad idea. So, you can email it to us as well?
Yeah, no, I certainly will, and unfortunately, because of the quality of the image, but, we can absolutely send the spreadsheet, this is available online, it is all through UCOA, and there are ten different ways to skin this cap. In the end, it ends up showing you, we're always at the bottom, we're always below, we've been responsible with our retiree healthcare, we've completely eliminated that obligation, we continue to look in our budget for cost savings, and every time we look under a rock, we take advantage of that, to the benefit of our students. But, we're at that point now, where we can't continue this type of activity, where we know we need to provide more for our student population.
Let me ask you a brief question about the start time of the high school, I know I've read studies as well, too. Do you expect that to come at any point, I know we've been talking about that for probably two to three years anyway, in terms of adjusting the start time of the high school.
Basically, we stretched it a couple of years ago, having the middle and the high up on a certain guide, if you will, more like around, say, eight, ten, eight, fifteen, research shows, if we did that, we've had several muscles to make that happen, but if you were to root that in the budget, would roll it up and fall?
Well, and that's, the next question is, what is the cost associated with that? Or is there, is there some, well, I'll let you guess, go ahead.
Depending on rooting, eight to ten must add approximately, say, around five hundred and fifty K, give or take.
It's a heavy lift, but, it's, it's staring us all in the face. You have the ability to do so much more, we know it won't have an impact on athletics, the day can be adjusted accordingly, and it provides the opportunity for, it also provides the opportunity to have early classes at the beginning of your day, so if kids really wanna load their schedule, they can do PE in the morning, get their bodies going, they can take extra classes, and the, that's all built into what the projected costs would be.
Mr. President? Yes, go ahead. Just curious, what effect would it have on athletics? If you go an extra hour, would you affect CTOs on?
Basically, call the RIL, they don't have a lot of them.
And, and often, you'll find with kids practicing, some of the coaches, not all, but some of them are full-time employees in the private sector, so, they work a regular day, so, it doesn't have as much of an impact on athletic teams as you might expect.
If you could, a baseball game, normally would start at three thirty, you would have to start at four thirty, or whatever.
Possibly. It's dual. They closed the question, they answered it.
And if you look at a lot of the independent schools or other schools, we have among, among the, of the earliest start time in Rhode Island, and so, other schools, particularly the independents, have to start more around eight o'clock, which is much more of an optimal time for a teenager.
I have a couple of other questions, first one's to Brian. Brian, do you have any explanation on what our tax base increase, if any, over last year is gonna be this year?
Yes, that's something, actually, I had to provide at this meeting anyways, so, thank you. So, the, I wanna preface this by just saying, first, these are estimates at this time, where we may see a lot of change still is on the tangible. The assessor has made some assumptions, the tangible, businesses have until the end of March to get their replies in, so, we're confident with this number right now, but there are some large businesses that haven't responded yet on the tangible, and that could obviously alter the number. So, with that said, in the current year, the assessed values are three billion four hundred and fifty seven thousand. As of right now, we're looking at an assessed values of three point five billion, an increase of four hundred forty-two point five million. This, without having a rate change, keeping our rates as is, that would be, that would result in a levy increase of one point three cent, one point three percent, or eight hundred and forty-six thousand.
What's that?
What's that?
I didn't hear the last.
That would be a levy increase of eight hundred and forty-six thousand, or one point six under the four point four million, four percent cap.
Would you expect tangibles to go up by any significant amount?
No, 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 if anything, the tangibles will go down.
Did you say this was real market, or?
That's everything, but where, the tangibles are still an estimate at this time, but they're still subject to change.
Okay, directed to you guys, Lisa, you mentioned you can't change your sports participation.
Nelson Smithfield, they drive, they were denied by Ride, are they were stated charge for things like a bus ride, or a transport, there's not a lot there.
For Alex, in the first page of the budget, leasing work, could you explain that a little more?
Yeah, that five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars is the amount that, if we did a master lease, and we bought the, we have a line item in the budget to pay for them, so we would, we would pay for the, for the items out of the North Cumberland, North McCaw, and high school, we would leave through a lease, we would pay for them, and then the leasing. And then the leasing company would reimburse us. Once we sent them copies of the checks with cash and the rest of it, proof that we purchased these items, they would cut us a check back. If we just deposited against the expenditure or whatever, it would show no action. You know, we want to show the expenditures. So, we would take it in as lease proceeds. So, it's just the offset of what those chrome posts will cost.
And middle school sports, do they all want to raise their funds?
It's an integral part of the budget presently. We fund it.
The school...
They start funding the options. So, they're not requiring to raise any more?
Not at this point.
If that's it?
It's $30,000.
Thank you. Alex, I just wanted to confirm the last page of your projection, or next to last page. The certified retirement line, from the year that we're in, which is about $4.5 million, over the next couple of years is expected to grow to $5.7 million. It's at about $1.2 million, an increase on that one line item. So, $1.2 million on one line item. So...
If we continue to see 7% increases, which has been kind of what the increase has been.
So, the, you know...
This year, the increase is high because you had the initial 4% of salary that was calculated on. But going forward, when I show that type of...
So, with the contract coming due, I mean, I'm sure when we go into that meeting in August, we're going to say, "Listen, we can't give you step increases, which are basically a form of automatic annual increases or salary increases." But they call it something different, step increases. "We can't give you wage increases on top of the step increases because we need to spend that money on escalating costs in health insurance and pension." I mean, is normally that's how that's presented? Because I mean, there's no money tree. We're spending millions more on other benefits that we're providing in that CBA. How can we afford as a town to keep paying for those and also step increases and salary increases?
What we've often done is we've gone through, when I first got on the school committee, it was an 11% co-pay. So, we're now up to 22. We've done a plan design change on more than one occasion so that co-pays are higher. Deductibles are built into the budget. We offer FSA to try and help bridge that gap so that they can contribute and help offset their increasing costs. So, we've transferred a lot of costs. It's not what private sector generally is. But for all of those of us who work in the private sector, we respect that. We get that. And we have maintained as part of our CBAs that we do make changes to make ourselves as competitive as we can in that area. We've also, out of six years, they've taken, only have had raises for two of those years. So, four years, they've had freezes. We've had step freezes. If we can change the general assembly to allow us to rework how steps are organized, we're happy to have that discussion. But at this point, you know, we have what we have. But what we've shown is how our PPE dollars are spent. It's really not a heavy lift in those salary line items for elementary, middle, and high school teachers.
Increase the budget by millions, if not 10 million there. You know, your number starts off with 55 minus 52. But we're increasing the budget by almost $10 million. And we're not, we're saying we're not spending it on education?
Can I ask what this $10 million is? Because, you know, I mean, we're looking at, on the sheet here, 37, 202 local recreation.
I'm looking at the total, total school budget in the town, town group budget.
But that includes state aid.
It includes state aid also.
Right, but our state aid is being sucked out of us by the charter schools too. And the state says, "You write the check for pension. We can't say, 'No, we can't write it.'" They say, "You write the check for the charter school. We can't say, 'No, you write it.'" I mean, so it's not 10 million. It's not really 10 million that we've gotten. Cumberland, the spending of the schoolchildren here, it's been taken out.
Yeah, that 2.6 million is going to the charters.
For this year?
No, that's the current, that's the current budget. It rolls in the budget, right? Going back to 2012, it might even be less than that. But the charter school line is currently somewhere around, the outside tuition line is around 2.8 or thereabouts. Back in 2012, we could look at what it was in the school budget in 2012. It might have been a million or $900,000. My point is, is that, I understand that line has grown a million or two even, Paul, but not $10 million. And I'm just a little confused. The budget that was presented in 2012, that's in the town council budget plan, is $52.5 million. Now, we're talking about a $62.5 million. And it's $10 million. Not all of it went to charters. And we're saying that not, and not that much of it went to teaching neither.
But I think if you look, and again, if you look at the UCOA data in here, pulled up. I know. So, from 2010 to 2014, this is how our numbers shake out. So, the first section right up here, this is face-to-face teaching. This is where the money has gone for teaching. So, from 2010, we were $30 million. We're now up to $1.2. If you look at per pupil and teacher support, so that's all the, you know, the support staff, nursing, professional people that help with our students, it went from $7.6 million to $7.6 million. So, that's the instructional part. The operational part, we can see it went from $8.7 to $11 million. And that's student transportation, which has increased from 1.9 to 2.6. We have a pretty robust policy as far as walkers. Ask a lot of the parents whose kids walk three miles to the bus stop from high school. We have food service, which has gone from 1.1 to 1.9. We have safety, which we feel obligated to provide. Our building upkeep has remained generally leveled. Workers' comp and unemployment goes up and down. Operational costs, though, overall, have been between $8 and $11 million. Other commitments have risen from 3.2 to 4.9. So, the money, some comes, has come in through the state. And the state has basically said, "You cannot provide, you cannot use our money for other stuff." And the other stuff are those two targeted areas. It's clear we're using their money for other stuff. And then lastly, there's a leadership piece. And what we've seen is that while it fluctuates a little bit, it remains pretty static. So, leadership, instruction, and pupil support remain relatively unchanged in this overall budget. So, if we want to go after tuitions, capital projects, claims and settlements, or retiree benefits, we can certainly have that discussion at our next CBA. And if we want to talk about transportation, again, we've said, if we could defer costs, we absolutely would do that if the state would allow. That's where the lion's share of the money is going. It's not going to improve our instructional program. And that, this is audited numbers. So, unfortunately, the reality is those costs, just like all other communities, are increasing at a rate faster, and in our situation, faster than we're able to delegate money toward instruction. And it will continue. It has continued annually. It's those two items, operations and other initiatives, are growing faster than the money that's coming in to support.
And even the transportation, part of that is what we realigned, when the superintendent realigned the district, because we hit so overcrowded at Community and Cumberland Hill and those schools that we realigned the district. There was a need, because of that, there was a need to add five buses to make that all work, to get the schools where you could get, you know, you could service the people that, you know, one of those neighborhoods and not have, you know, just one school, you know, at 110% capacity and another school at 70% capacity. So, that's the big piece in transportation. Wasn't that the contract was so, was that you had to add five more buses to get that done, which needs to be done.
The reality is we need a plan. And we need a plan that's going to help us improve our academic program. And unfortunately, we've had this conversation. And the council has been generous to the committee. There's no doubt about that. Over the last few years, we've really had to work hard on this. Conversations are pretty difficult. But the reality is we need to build a better school program. And we've shown over the last four or five years of UCOA data, we're not getting very far as far as funding. And we have absolutely changed a lot of our model to better support instruction for students and be more progressive and be aligned to the standards that they test us against. And be ready for things like park exam where it's now all technology-based. Five years ago, we barely had a stick of technology that was sufficient enough to support something like that. So, you know, we're, the little engine that could, we're trying really hard to build a better school program. But we need to have a plan with the council to address the funding shortfall. And the funding formula was built to provide some taxpayer relief. But there were communities that were considered underfunded. And Cumberland, I think, was one of the biggest winners in the state formula. It didn't mean that on the back end, on the local side, there would be taxpayer relief. It's actually contrary to that, as we've seen, the costs are continuing to grow. So, you know, we can say, "We need a plan. We need to be responsible to the students that are here. We need to find a structure in a way that we can support them best." And that's part of this conversation.
Ms. President? Couple of other questions as we're talking. When a teacher is hired, tell me that with respect to how long he or she stays in the system.
We can get that for you.
You'll get this?
Most of the hires I have seen have stayed for a long time. And now, with the pension change, if you will, I think you'll see more folks taking longer because now the age has increased, the years, I can't say. So, I don't think you'll see a lot of departures. In terms of the ones I've seen, I think about most of them are still here from where I hired them.
So, a teacher comes in as step one, which is approximately $44,000, give or take. Each year is equivalent to a step. And then there are about $74,000, $75,000 after 10. Does that teacher receive any additional compensation in years 11 to 20?
Only if we provide a raise. That would be above.
What percentage of our teachers are at the top step?
I don't know. It'll be next year, right off the top of my head. But it's, we have about, just about 405 teachers or so, somewhere around there. And a year or so, it was 210. I'd say probably about, I guess about 240 or so, 250 of them are at the top step.
60%?
If that's where it comes to, yeah.
Now, obviously, a teacher that's been there 10 years has some institutional knowledge, which has a tremendous intrinsic value. On the flip side of that is the more expensive. Is there any, does it make any sense to incent teachers to retire and to replace them with step one teachers?
Actually, we had a couple of them prior to getting here. 18 folks took advantage of that. Right now, it's amazing, because you look at the seniority list, and we're not seeing as many folks who are that seasoned. So, it's interesting how ways to change. We have some folks probably a couple of years away. But now, since they changed the rules, you have to be older to go out, you're further away from the goal. So, we actually did that a couple of years back.
It's been, yeah, the new pension changes, they have to stay longer in the system. So, it's, most people stay because of the healthcare need. You know, they don't get qualified for play group 65 or any of that type of stuff. So, they have to stay in the system longer. I think also one of the things, because the way we structured the contract with a 004, we didn't have any, we haven't had one retiree this year. We usually have that 8, 10, 15 retirees that would pick up that $300,000, $400,000. I don't have any of that this year because I think most people want to get that. They went two years with no raise. They want to get that 4% raise and, you know, that type of stuff.
All right. And Lisa, you made a comment, I believe, was with regard to redistricting. And the community was not in favor of that. Could you explain?
I got a means exactly. When I came here, I believe it was 18 years before the Commonwealth District had looked at balancing the schools, they were woefully out of balance. And they weren't done because political is a little tough. But we took it out and we did it and moved the neighborhoods around and balanced the five old churches.
And we were already at kindergarten.
We had to fully take it as well.
So, we are as balanced as we began?
They have the rooms available.
Yeah, 2011, we did it 35 years. We took a peek at it. But I actually track the L's every other week. And we're pretty balanced right now.
And our percentage of occupancy in the current dorm and all schools is fairly high?
Actually, we'll have a new, new data set, not tomorrow, off from the architect. But I haven't already, yeah, I don't want them already. Ashton, I, tomorrow's in contact at 90%. I don't remember my head from already.
Yeah, it's obviously, sorry.
Yeah, actually, the F is a little over what they wanted. But Ashton said 90. Rest I don't remember. I'll see him tomorrow there.
And maybe it might be helpful, Lisa, if you could explain your commission and your apartment and the way you think that might be going. Would you repeat that?
I'm sorry, I don't think we could.
I'm sorry, that's wrong. Sheen of William is on the commission. I don't know the name of the one, one on the name. They're looking at fund.
Correct. So, it's the House Study Commission for Education Funding. And it largely relates to charter schools and the costs that public district-type schools have and charter-based schools have. And it really runs a kind of a wide array of, some schools have more private school students. So, they have costs that are affiliated with obligations related to that. Charter schools don't have that. Some charter schools are pension-based, some are not. So, what they're trying to get a sense from is, one, from district schools as to what type of costs they have, but also the realization that money doesn't follow the child. Well, when money follows, the cost savings don't. So, they've been trying to get their heads around how that picture maps out for different types of school districts. As far as outcomes, I know we have one meeting remaining, is my understanding. It was originally going to be three or four meetings. They're all online. I urge you to watch them. I think they are pretty lively discussions. And you can tell kind of where folks' interests are. I would expect, I served on the Senate Housing Panel for School Housing Aid last year. They do provide a series of recommendations based on the input and feedback from testimony or input from the delegates on the committee. So, I don't really have an answer as far as they, they seem to be leaning towards this. That hasn't been discussed at all. So, I think you'll hear in the next probably few months about what their study commission results are.
I'm just wondering if there's going to be any specific proposed legislation that could be implemented this year? Because I think I testified, Fox testified, you have, several of us have testified. I've always said it's an acute problem in Cumberland. But I think it's becoming a crisis in Cumberland. Roughly 8% of our students attend charter schools. 10% each year, 10%. For those of us in business, a 2% change in income or expenses is something to be really concerned about. A 10% change will put businesses out of business. Obviously, schools can't go out of business. This is something that doesn't affect most of the state. If they lose 2% to charter schools, and I want the state for the record that they have in support of charter schools, but I think we should have a choice. But because it's located in our town, several of these schools are located in our town, there's a propensity for our children to leave loan school and go to another. And I don't know where this is going to end, but it's not going to be pretty. Because it's, it's going to come to a head.
And I don't mean to interrupt. As I understand it, you're, and how many is that about the halfway point?
Yeah, I mean, if we lose more. And again, what I was going to say is I'm in support. And five years ago, or six years ago, whenever I heard of this funding formula that funding follows the child, I thought that made great sense. I was a 100% supporter until I started attending your meetings and understanding that while the funding does follow the child, the expenses don't. And that's something we need to look at, we need to be sensitive to.
And if you watch the last School Housing Aid, our House Panel on Education Funding, there was a gentleman there from the Annenberg Foundation. And he had a report that he distributed, and I'm happy to include a link to that. It really talks about having a plan. So, as I requested a plan, having a plan and having a plan at the statewide level, having a plan at a local level. And it engages the community. How do we want to see our schools? What do we want to have? I mean, that's really key. And maybe we can engage with him to have, to bring that discussion here locally because they looked nationally at what has occurred in various communities, both successes and failures.
Now, I know there were four sending schools to PDP, four sending districts.
Right.
Are they allocated the same 25% of responsibility?
Yeah, as far as I know.
What do we actually fill? Because I know Lincoln doesn't fill their quarter.
So, if I understand... After the first kind of pass-through, if one town only had saved 20%, the last 5%, can't come out of the other districts, so we can go above our limit.
Right, and that's what I'm asking, how we above our limit?
Sitting, I can't tell you the town or not.
Actually, we're 27%.
A little bit.
Yeah, a little.
That was quick. How'd you get that?
This is my department.
So what are next steps? I mean, this is an obligatory meeting, but I think it's an opportunity for us to share information. And do you need information from us?
Probably will. I was just a little tired of doing this, I'm sure. And I know that in the past, you know, Alex's door is always open, as all his doctor thought. And we have had conversations, I know in years past, we've had conversations on a summer regular basis, and you're only a phone call away. You've always been very, very good exchanging information and other questions that we had. So I don't expect there's going to be any difference this year from that. Well, for the new councils that may be on there, you know, I will say before you have a chance to say, call me anytime if that's what it is, although you don't always answer your phone on by that, but that's...
Always emailing.
I know you do. That's always the best way to do what he has. Anytime he's crunching numbers, it's very difficult to answer the phone, however, he's always going to get it back to you. So, you know, I will encourage everybody and anybody for that matter, and I know that you and Brian have raised conversations as far as that goes.
We appreciate the working relationship.
And it's been good over the years, and expecting to continue it. It's my hope anyway, there's no reason to doubt that. Any other questions, statements or anything? You go ahead.
Not for us today. So the statement was made that you guys need a plan for the educational piece. Wasn't the Chromebooks the start of this plan, the foundation, if you will?
Absolutely.
Where we want to see Cumberland going, the utilization of the Chromebooks that were beating out of all the textbooks and looking for savings as far as those, as those textbooks become ancient? Well, on that piece, I mean, you know, every year I come to the council with a stack of books, you know, from 1980.
I'm not going to break that back this year, please.
No, I'm saying, if the Chromebooks go through, I'll continue buying what's called eBooks. And now, for example, the middle level, we have Discovery Ed, one of our programs for history. History was kind of, I think we had programmed the middle, now it's really nice to, the e-book. In our budget right now, we have chemistry, it's an e-book, it's around $22,000 for all the chem sections. That's a really good price. So with Chromebooks, we should get eBooks, you don't have to buy a textbook. Really, frankly, you have to wonder why you buy a textbook. You still might want to buy, you know, Hawk Fin and Field Pages, but you don't have to either, by the way. But textbooks, that's not much, you really all wonder why buying textbooks.
Really, it's been those same four books you used to bring for the last five years, but I'm not going to go.
It's all right. For the record, I had 48 titles that were on my list, I've got 36. Ms. President?
Any other questions or statements at this point? Anything that you would give ads? This might be a good time to entertain a portion of the adjournment. I just wanted to...
Go ahead.
Give it a check.
That's a adjournment first. I need a motion to adjourn.